For the closing. And they wanted to know if they were going to be able to put her in her place. And allow her from Massachusetts to move. And the question was, can they do that? And the answer was, the guidance we have is that the borders are not closed. So there are not restrictions on travel. And if they're coming from outside the state, they should be asked to quarantine for fourteen days. Another question was about planning board meetings in regard to the emergency order twelve. And they said again, as long as we're providing telephone access or video or both, then we don't need to allow the public to be in a meeting room. And that is correct, as you know, that's what we're doing now. That's correct under this order. Another person talked about elections and town meetings. And their elections are done by official ballot and are held the night of the meeting. The question is, what's the guidance on this moving forward? And the answer was, we would advise that a moderator should give an announcement that there's an intention to postpone the ballot voting day. The current law only permits you to make this formal decision the day before the election. So they are allowed to do it the day before. And then they are only allowed to extend for two weeks on the RSA six, six, nine, colon, one. And if things continue to be in this nature, they're exempted from the day before that extension and just for another two week extension. Another question was, according to the order, allowed to move meetings into virtual platforms? But is this going to be any further before? Is this going to be considered to allow the selectmen to virtually sign through the electronic laptop? The Hampshire Municipal Association proposed additional provisions to include another emergency order to include electronic signature. There was a long conversation and the final decision is being considered now. And they hope there will be another order that will address this. So again, hold on to what we're doing, go in one at a time to sign until this order comes through. There was another talk about, again, town meeting. They said, the town meeting was scheduled for March fourteenth. They postponed it to May ninth. If they move forward with the meeting during a time when there's still a number of COVID patients, what is the discussion about remote participation? And most people currently think remotely is what can include which only comment. That is actually true. They said they're working on additional guidance. It's not filed, but it is being looked at. At the present time, the business meeting cannot accommodate voters who want to vote remotely. So again, stay tuned. And they're going to keep us advised. And if you have to postpone the meeting, that's what you have to do. Um, let's see, that's remote. I'm sorry, I'm turning pages because I can't hold my phone. Um, another one was dealing with evictions. Again, about this particular campground. And he wanted to convict the camper from the campground. Does this follow the same guidelines of ruins for no eviction? And the answer is, when looked at the perspective of transient housing, the Consumer Protection Bureau deems this ambiguous. In the spirit of the order, they believe it is better not to do this. Uh, there was an emergency order that this would be extended to campgrounds and people couldn't be evicted for lack of payment. However, they could be evicted for other reasons. So that's at least out there. But they can't evict for non-payment of rent. There was another question on, it said, the guidance, uh, can we get guidance in the way of a document to deal with employees that you are talking to? Because they have been potentially exposed by another employee who may be exposed from an outside job. Is there a questionnaire or guidance that we could use for employee-related input? And the answer is Primex without you on the call. And they may have HR guidance, but the Hampshire Municipal Association does not have guidance at this time. They caution us, they say these scenarios are going to be very fact-sensitive. A research document or a checklist is probably the best way to triage this. And they said to give Primex a call and they can help with how to deal with it. They said it loops back to situations that this should be worked out with management at the outside jobs, confirming that an exposure did in fact occur. There's another question about hotels and motels. Are they considered essential according to this order? And yes, they are considered essential. There was another, uh, comment about that that said they're already thought to stop this because they're being inundated with people coming from hotspots. And so far, the answer was, we've not heard of these conversations. Um, if they are occurring, but they'll look into it. They also talked about can the selectmen shut down short-term rentals? And the answer was, there are no provisions for select boards to shut down short-term rentals. This would require another emergency order. The principal way municipalities have this is through zoning regulations and its coordinations. There's another comment and question about summer houses. Again, where people from hotspots are coming and they'd like to urge the commission, commissioner of biomartial, to ask the governor to enhance restrictions for out-of-staters. Do communities have the ability to limit this on their own? And the answer was, you would need to consult very carefully with local council and NHMA before doing that. In one of the governor's prior press conferences, he said that we would not be closing the borders as it's unconstitutional. Uh, I'm in here, not too much more on yesterday. Um, another comment on, they have a number of, this is going to make us forget people. Um, regarding meeting in public, we have a lot of members of committees that are somewhat technology-challenged. And some committees want to do a test run. Technically, they are meetings, but they're just testing the equipment. Is this an issue? And the answer is, no, it wouldn't qualify as a public meeting because you're just testing equipment and you're not making decisions. Um, so it wouldn't have control under the RSA ninety-one A. There was another concern about parks being open and playgrounds being open. And they wanted to know what other municipalities, if they were closing playgrounds. The answer was, we have not seen this occurring. But you should remind people to continue practicing social distancing. Sorry, Primex has actually fielded a lot of calls about this recently. It's a local policy decision that possibly the selectmen should consider. And at least post the airing, post the airing, or maybe even take away any tables, picnic tables that might be there. Um, and there was another comment about, under this emergency order and the position of the meeting. Traditionally, they vote on appointing a new town chair or a new committee chair. Is this imperative or should they delay it? And it said, under the emergency order, it weighs the requirement that in order to have an emergency meeting, that an immediate action be processed. You can have a meeting remotely without the act immediately necessary. Long-term requirements of the meeting should be followed, except it's occurring electronically. So that's the only thing they would have to add. And they also said, it is permissible to have a standard meeting in that you are doing your normal twenty-four hour notice and reminded you to post it in two places. One can be the website and one can be someplace else. Um, they also talked about, what about things like building permits that are normally done in public, you know, in a public meeting? Does this still need to happen? And the answer is, right now, the ability to have a non-contemporary meetings only apply to financial transactions according to RSA forty-one twenty-nine. But they are working on extending this to other issues. I don't think this applies to chance because it's not a public meeting. Uh, but I wanted to say it anyway. Um, there's also a question about looking into a situation where somebody has tested positive, applying for welfare, and they can't find a place of residence for them, must be quarantined. And the answer is, we are working on homeless quarantine housing at the state level. We're in the process of working with the national guard to help out on this. As for the welfare side of the question, at this moment, the best option is to have the welfare officer contact and work with DHS to get the person into the appropriate housing and then go from there. It also would include isolation and or quarantine procedures. Um, it also talked about, in the event that elections continue to be postponed, what happens to the term limits? Says when someone is elected for the three-year term, they stay in office until the successor is elected. So even though the meetings are postponed, the limit is up to, not until a new election occurs and a new person then gets sworn in. And then, um, let's see, another question, I don't know if this applies to us. Is the bear hunt initiative something that would be encouraged or discouraged? The answer is, we would have to leave it to the discretion of the chief and we'll remember his position on it. Um, understanding that a meeting, another question, that a meeting doesn't need to take place to have the manifest approved. But the question was, can the select board direct the town administrator to sign on behalf of them? And the answer is, no, there is a necessity that the select board sign a manifest. Right to the common vision, this is not allowed, um, to have somebody else other than the selectmen sign. But if the electronic signature passes, then they would not need to do this. They can sign obviously remotely. The approval from the minutes may be sufficient, but it may be more efficient in the future to have electronic signatures. And that's it on legal from yesterday. Um, today, today. So some of the important things, uh, the Hampshire persons with COVID-367, deaths three, hospitalized forty-nine. We had five thousand, six hundred and sixty-three negative tests. Fifty-six people have recovered. Twelve hundred and fifty are being monitored. Um, and we have ninety-seven cases. Also, they wanted to update us on first responders quarantine status. Um, we have ninety-one quarantined, eleven quarantined. They're coordinating quarantine housing for first responders, as we talked about in the past. Um, let's see. And there's concern around, out of the, sorry, a lot of concern around the state. Especially in the northern country, uh, part of the state. And there's much talk that these people might be coming from a hotspot. So they got to be keeping an eye on that. Uh, they also said that, um, this was kind of positive, I think. We're ahead of other states. The other states are actually reaching out to us for advice on how we're being so effective in what we're doing. Uh, so that's a plus for the answer. We also talked about the COVID data and sheets and the masks. Sometimes they don't match. And they reminded us that the sheets are not unitized. So twenty-one days after positive, the patient is going to be removed. So those numbers are going to be different. They also talked about, can we share the list of positives with our mutual district? The answer was, no, you cannot. Everyone has to have their own special box dot com. Um, so like we couldn't share it, say, with, um, Placso or the Trinity ambulance. Um, within our town, we can. When I say we can, uh, please notify our, and emergency management to share with you. Um, we talked about PPEs. Again, that's a hot topic all the time. I'm sure you see it on the news. And they asked us to fill out a survey in the bird rate. Um, so Larry's working on that with the help of the chiefs. Um, there was a question about, they have a patient who originally tested negative. What is, and this was from a private ambulance. But now he's symptomatic and his family not allowing him to come home. And he's asking us to bring him to the hospital. The answer is, contact us. Uh, we can help him forward to email and don't bring him home. Um, another comment about people coming to the state adding to the problem of already stressed to our grocery stores and chains. Pharmacies are actually getting people transferred their prescriptions to up here so they can come from wherever it is they're coming from. They said they're going to let the governor, um, they're going to mention it again, but the governor is aware of that. Uh, there was also a question about a private fitness center that has stayed open. And they added that a lot of their first responders actually go because shouldn't we allow it to stay open? And they said, please contact the business administration, uh, to try to get them on the essential list. And they're going to, the owners of those fitness centers will have to answer questions to see if it actually is essential. Um, there was another comment, uh, I think from a fire department. What do I do about employees who are symptomatic, but are negative for COVID? What about employees who are being told by urgent care that they can go back to work even though they're symptomatic and they're being told it's probably just some regular flu? And the answer was, symptomatic people need to be quarantined for fourteen days. Please take the most aggressive approach. We want to be careful with flu-like symptoms. Bear on the side of caution. Uh, there was also a comment about, when should we peak? And they said, there's a lot of news out there. Um, we're not necessarily close to peak. The estimates are clearly estimates, but they said at least another three or four weeks till we hit peak. Um, there was talk about, um, somebody, they have a first responder waiting on test results. And they wanted to know if the spouse could be tested. And heaven forbid, somebody dies of COVID that's on duty. Will COVID-19 be covered under the line of duty death? And they said that we can get the spouse tested if the first responder checked off the box and said they were a first responder. If your first responder's test went to a private company, it's not something under our control. But yes, the COVID-19 will cover a line of duty death. Um, they talked about homeless populations waiting to test. Regionally, we're working on transportation for residents to utilize public transportation to get medical appointments. And if you need help with homeless populations, again, they can assist. Um, one of the sheriffs, the sheriff asks, what to do about critical vendors who are not being tested? But such people are critical to safety, so fire because they repair the radios. And the answer was, we often talk about expanding the list of essential businesses. But if we prioritize everyone, then we prioritize no one. So I take that for what it is. Uh, and then there was a comment, the positives on the maps that we are now seeing, doesn't mask the positives on our list. And these cases, some of the cases in this particular town, said they're aware of and they're not on the list, on that, on the list, but they're getting, yet it's on the map. And again, they reminded us, you know, we're just starting this, the government gaps, it's not a perfect system. And remember that names will be purged after twenty-one days and that they could be delayed. And lastly, they reminded us to track expenses and track payroll. Larry wanted me to mention and can weigh in on it, but on your time sheets, I'm going to give you an example. If you are scheduled for an eight-hour day, say a town hall, and go to a library anywhere, and you're home because you can't work, the building is closed. And let's say at home, you work actually three hours and the other five you don't. On your time sheet, you're still going to put your nine to five or whatever your scheduled hours would have been. And then as a margin, if you could write, and some of you are doing things, it's pretty good. If you could write five hours of bad days with COVID, that really will help us. We really get twisted on this. So don't give us a total at the end of the week like, oh, I worked, you know, twelve and a half hours on COVID, but you didn't break down weight, you did it, because then we have to try to figure it out. And I think that's it.
All right, thank you. What I learned was, if you applied for a marriage certificate, uh, COVID, you still have to get marriage certificates. So, I'm sure everybody writes that down. So, um, a lot of stuff there, a lot of things are changing every day as I always do. So, uh, I did, uh, want to get to Shanti. Uh, because Trish did touch upon, um, building permits and stuff. So Shanti, where are you with, uh, I know you emailed us some stuff. What do you need from us to move forward with your stuff?
Um, I just basically need the board to, you know, thoroughly read the draft documents. And if, um, the board is in agreeance and is willing to accept those as presented, um, ideally, they would, you know, ideally be posted on the website. And, um, you'll be able to more effectively track down construction and, you know.
So members of the board, does anybody have any questions on what Shanti sent us? Or is everybody okay with that post?
I have reviewed all three documents. And I would like to make a motion to accept the residential permit application, the commercial permit application and the permit fee schedule as proposed.
Thank you, I'm Larry. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You need to do a roll call vote. You need to do a roll call vote.
So I heard, I heard Larry has an aye, I heard Lisa has an aye, I heard Kate has an aye. Charlie, are you an aye?
Yep.
And Matt's an aye. Thank you, fine.
Thank you.
All right, Shanti, let us know if you have any other problems, but it sounds like we're, we're good to go.
Okay, and we'll throw this out, um, and I don't want to, something that Trish had mentioned. In Stratum, with regards to the playgrounds and parks, we have prohibited the use of the equipment, but we are currently still allowing access to the parks. So we basically have cordoned off the equipment, um, with signage, uh, of every four feet all the way around the area, uh, boards work, uh, so I'll tell you that, go around there.
Yeah, thanks. That had occurred to me in, um, I'm only being half funny when I say this, that our playground equipment was dangerous before COVID-19. So, uh, hopefully, hopefully people aren't using it to begin with. But I don't know what everybody thinks about how we could, you know, sign it or whatever, or if we need to totally, I don't think I'd want to block out three parts as a whole. Um, so what are people thinking?
I'm good with signage. Or tape or rope or something that curtains off the equipment.
Yeah, and recommended you up the park, you know, like, just, they probably know the guideline, but we should stay at weekends just to be safe.
I think we have some flash tape we can throw around it. Okay. Is everybody okay with that?
Yes, so.
Sorry, Matt, can I just comment on something?
Sure, Trish, go ahead.
During one of the calls, they really talked about, um, you know, obviously people go to the park, but if, and roping off is awesome, like Shanti said, but if we have picnic tables, and I believe we do, we should remove them.
Yeah.
Can we have the, uh, road crew remove the picnic tables?
So I guess, Diane, could you, uh, inquire tomorrow morning about that?
I will try to reach out tonight, yeah.
And, uh, if we can put them at, uh, at Maravak Road. I'm, I'm the one who installed them. I think there's only four. So, um, I don't think it'll be a big deal. Um, okay, so Larry will try to come up with some tape or something around those. Well, well, uh, if, if you could do us a favor, Larry, if you end up taping them off, could you send us all a picture of what, what we show we got? Thank you, okay. And then, in that post-pandemic, we're going to leave it up there until we replace all that equipment. Because that'd be much safer for everyone. Um, all right, so, thank you, Shanti. So anybody else have anything COVID-related?
Hello, yes, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Carrie, yes, we have a picnic table at the library that's out, um, beside the shed. Do you think that should be removed as well?
So me personally, see what everybody else thinks, but I don't think that's kind of like glaring, um, necessity. I think what, I think what Shanti was talking about is, uh, what they're worried about is, people go to the park and they congregate at the table and they have a picnic lunch and everything. Whereas a park is like a magnet for that. The library is more, is, you know, if the library is closed, you're probably not going to get people.
I was thinking that, but I just wanted to be sure just because.
Absolutely.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks.
Plus, plus, Matt, you could tip it upside down.
Yeah, I was thinking of that, um, you know, um.
I don't know, yeah.
People, it doesn't ruin it.
It just don't want to ruin the equipment.
Right, right. Um, okay, anybody else? Diane, what was on your list?
You have to, the concerns and, um, comments from your department.
Yeah, so I, I don't think we have to go through each one tonight. I think what I read is, my biggest concern is, we don't have to solve it tonight, but I'm concerned about budgeting across all departments, especially when we're paying people who aren't coming to work. Um, this is a earth-shattering news. I, I believe probably every municipality and every company that's not open is concerned about this. But that's what keeps me up at night, other than a crying baby. That's what keeps me up. Um, of those concerns, anything anybody wants to bring forward right now for discussion?
This is Pete, transfer station Pete. Um, one of the, uh, concern I had was, uh, people starting to get angry and upset over time when they're not able to drop off bulk items in construction. So just wondering if maybe if you just take bulk in C and D when they use their vouchers, we come up with some kind of box or something, they put vouchers in themselves, we don't have to touch it.
So that's not a bad idea. Would, would we be able to do it further than if they wanted to bring exact change or a check? They could put that in the box. What do you think about that?
A check would do. Uh, again, we would have to put it in the box and to be safe, they would have to sit for a minimum of three days because we know there, there would be nothing, uh, necessary as far as I'm aware.
Yeah, I think so. What does everybody think about that? I don't have a problem with that.
So will that increase, will that increase the traffic a lot at the transfer station or not much if you do that?
I don't think it'd be much. We're still closed out of town, uh, residents, so.
Oh, okay.
It's actually different if we're in a traffic down a lot.
Okay, and I, I would think that it'd be minimal seeing how these people are already coming and getting upset.
Yeah, right. Yeah, so it hasn't been anybody angry yet, but there's still, you know, oh, well, would you think that we'd be different? So I, I, I wanted to bring you. So I think, Pete, you have the support of the board to do what you think is right with that. And I would just recommend having, you know, kind of a portable box that you can take in every night and lock up, um. What is that? Obviously. Absolutely. Great, good idea. Thank you. Anybody else? Matt, just have one quick thing on, just a, just a comment. He's still there? Go ahead.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I, I just wanted, uh, everyone to know that, uh, I've made two trips on behalf of Mr. Foote to go get supplies. And so, uh, I know he's working diligently to get some more supplies for public safety. Uh, and if it wasn't for the EOC's effort. Uh, I can tell you, for the fire department, we'd definitely be hurting because everything that we have ordered has been pretty much backordered. Uh, and we're not going to see it until May, June. So we were able to acquire N-95 masks, regular surgical masks, gloves, gowns, eye protection, uh, all the stuff that we needed, that we all. So we were able to acquire N-95 masks, regular surgical masks, gloves, downs, eye protection, uh, all the stuff that we needed, that we ordered, that we couldn't get. So I just wanted to give a, a thank you, uh, to Larry and his crew.
Yes, thank you, Larry and the EOC crew.
Thank you, thank you.
Unfortunately, unfortunately, I think we're gonna have to go into the well with this stuff. I don't think it's gonna be a short-term thing, but...
Uh, you know, some of the townwide efforts people are doing, making masks? Is that something that would be remotely helpful because I know they're not as, you know, as effective as the ones you need? Is that at all something we should look to in case? Can I make a comment?
Yeah, I agree. That's been asked on some of these calls and people are saying that that's not good to do that.
Okay, good.
It's like false protection.
Yes.
My understanding is the people that are making these are just making them as covers to go over the N-95 mask to allow the N-95 mask to last a little longer?
I think also, uh, my opinion is it, it makes people feel good to do it.
True.
I think, uh, it gives them an activity to take their mind off. I think that's a lot of it, so.
Well, sure. Real supply would be accepted.
Yeah. Um, all right, the, um, I'm looking at the concern list and I'd like to propose to the board, uh, they might have seen this, our, our, uh, reevaluation. So Andrea has asked, uh, if we wanna put together a general announcement, a website, or we want to, uh, push it out, leave things, um, you know, silent for a while. You know, normally, what is it Nancy, normally we'd be announcing reevaluation now, right? Is that, is that...
She does some, she does some stuff on her portion of the website, letting people know. She put a report, the town report, letting people know. But I think she just wants to, you know, make sure everybody is aware, um, of what's going on, you know? Plus, an announcement that she will be out and about.
Yeah. So what's the board thing? What do you wanna do at this point? Do you wanna just wait a week and see what happens? How do you go along with that?
Yeah, I don't think we need to take any action right now.
No, okay. All right, great. Um, just going through the list really quick. Chief, you had some requisitions for us to sign. Do you still need those on April seventh agenda?
They're already on the agenda.
Perfect.
Also, uh, um, this is for the board. I'm working, uh, to finish up with the new truck, uh, for the board. All the manufacturers, just a heads up, as of May first, all, uh, the cost for the fire apparatus is going up. So it doesn't make a difference what manufacturer we choose, uh, as of May first, all prices are gonna be increased. So I'm hoping to have that to the board, uh, with the recommendation, hopefully for the next meeting, so the board can make a decision.
It, it's not increasing over the warrant article amount though, correct?
I have no idea. Well, one...
Because they can't, you can only spend up to that amount.
I, I truly understand that. The warrant article was for one manufacturer. That manufacturer, uh, the paperwork that was turned in actually had, uh, that agreement that was sent. Well, the, I don't wanna say agreement, I apologize. The proposal that was sent had an expiration date on it that has already passed. We had a discussion with them last week due to the town being, town hall being shut down, they actually extended it. It was only good, I think, to the week after the warrant meeting. So they've already extended it. And in extending it, they let us know that as of May first, the cost is gonna increase. They, what happened is we've had another manufacturer that was one of those three that came to the table. They have, were the second high bid, you could say. They've actually come in lower than the amount that was asked on the warrant article. We're working to make sure that what they're proposing is the exact same thing that was presented to the board originally. So we're getting the same truck, you could say. Uh, and the other thing...
Go ahead. I, I would just make the general comment and, and we can discuss this, you know, offline, but, but I would, uh, I would not, me personally, I would be prepared to take that fight to the manufacturer if they don't extend for us. Extension is like the name of the game right now for everything in the country. And I also, I also feel as though, I also feel as though a manufacturer is gonna want business when this is all over. Everybody's gonna want business, so I would be willing to fight that fight if it came down to it, but it sounds like we still need to get more information.
Right, just, just for the board, uh, like I said, we talked numerous, once the warrant article was approved, the phones started ringing with different manufacturers. They're all on the same page. The two manufacturers that actually put in a proposal for a truck, both said the, they, they said the exact thing, same thing, come May first. And they all said, the other thing they said was they might shut down. If, if paperwork is agreed upon before the shutdown, they will continue to work on the truck. If it's not, then the truck, you, you'll just have to wait until they reopen for a second. Uh, the biggest thing for the board, well, for me, we wait from ten months of getting a fire truck up to fourteen months to sixteen months. If they shut down, it could be even longer. So we are trying to expedite, you know, going through all the paperwork to bring it to the board, and then it will be the board's decision. If the board chooses to wait, then the board chooses to wait. It, it, it is what it is. I'm just gonna bring it forward to the board with a recommendation from the committee, from the mechanic, and for the board to make its decision.
Yeah, bring it forward. I, I think, uh, the board will probably, probably recommend we move forward, but, you know, just bring, get us the paperwork and we'll go from there. No worries. Thank you. Thanks. All right, anything else?
Matt, what about...
And what, Uncle? Go ahead.
This is Diane.
Diane.
Okay, um, what about Mary Jo's concerns?
Yeah, I saw Mary Jo's concerns and, uh, it sounds like, um, we have a little time. I, I will tell you, I read in the Union Leader last night, um, that the governor is considering the legalities of waiving, um, interest and payments on everybody's tax bills. And so what, what he said in this article is that he doesn't think he has the power and it has to be up to the town officials. So, so we'll see, uh, what happens if he gives that a shot. But I think, I, I think the board's decision on this has to be kind of done on a case-by-case basis, uh, case-by-case basis in non-public. So I know Mary Jo has a little more time, but I think for an upcoming non-public, the board needs to discuss that topic if the board agrees with me on that.
I agree. Yes.
Hey, Matt?
Sounds good. Nancy?
Um, I did talk to Andrea because I know Mary Jo was concerned about not getting the warrant in time. And that's the definition, it'll, she'll have it either on or before the eighteenth of May. So there's no problem there. We start getting the first June, we'll go.
That's good. So let's, um, uh, you know, maybe the, uh, April seventh, non-public Diane, we can, uh, broach the topic.
Uh, tax links?
Yeah, so basically, uh, Mary Jo typically knows.
Yeah.
Is kind of filed under this category, right?
Mm-hmm.
So maybe she could give us a preview that we could consider on April seventh in non-public.
Okay.
If that makes sense. So I don't wanna say too much more in public, but.
Yeah.
We, uh, for those, those residents who are listening and stuff, we typically review this time of year, people who have not, uh, completely paid their tax bills for a while. So that's all we're talking about, just to be as transparent as possible, so, um, all right.
Does that change your will? All right, King, here, does there any chance there's gonna be a directive from Sununu at all on this issue? Or what you're saying is that it's up to us?
So like, so like I just said...
And we don't know.
So like I just said, there's a chance, but he's already kind of said that, uh, he doesn't think he can override the town officials. So we can discuss it more, uh, but I, I think we need to proceed as if we're not gonna get anything from the governor. And to me and Charlie might, uh, know better than I, it doesn't sound like the legislature's gonna get together anytime soon, so...
Okay.
Well, right, right now, it's tentative, not, not May fourth.
Oh, good, okay.
There's a... It could change, boys. It could change.
True, true. So, you're supposed to go back to school that day too, a lot, lot could happen, I think.
Yeah.
All right.
One more thing for Mary Jo.
Go ahead.
She, Mary Jo asked if she could have Sheldon come in if she needs her help.
I, I, what's the board think? I think that's, uh, totally okay. I think that's highly recommended.
Okay, I'll let her know.
But just, you know, the caveat with everybody is social distancing, right?
Yep. Okay.
Um, it's kinda like if anybody's been in a Dunkin' Donuts lately, they have the six-ounce markers. So they might wanna consider something like that, so... All right, uh, anybody wanna make a motion to, uh, go into, uh, non-public? Shall we have the recall? Yeah, I think, uh, Lisa, do you have the, uh, motion?
So Matt, am I going into that same number again?
Right.
So this would be...
There's a different call. We will. The other phone number, yeah. So I will move to go into non-public session at six forty eight PM under RSA ninety-one dash A colon three, section two, subsection L.
Second. Second by Larry, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That was a roll call though, right? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, Charlie was an aye, Lisa was an aye, Larry was an aye, Kate was an aye, Matt was an aye. For the, uh, everybody else, the board is gonna go into a non-public session. Uh, we appreciate your time, but this will be the end of the public meeting for tonight. We hope everybody stays healthy and we'll talk to you guys soon.
Thank you.
Good night.
Night.
Thanks, everybody. Bye. Have a good night.